Evening, everyone. Happy holidays and welcome to the twenty-third meeting of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland. It is now six P M. And I call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Cole.
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Simmons.
Here.
President Clark.
Here.
Mayor Sidnor.
Here.
Yavocora, Madam President.
You. For agenda item number three, approval of the minutes from the November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, regular meeting, the November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four closed session, and the December fourth, twenty-twenty-four work session. If there are no fits or objections, I will now entertain a motion for the three sets of minutes mentioned.
Madam President, I move that we approve the minutes from November twenty-fifth, regular meeting, closed session, and the December fourth work session.
Now seconded.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilman Cole.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Simmons.
Yes.
President Clark.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item number four is the report of the mayor and city council. This evening, we will begin with councilmember Nicole.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, President Clark. The last two weeks have been very busy as we kick off the holiday season in Laurel. The week of Thanksgiving, on Thanksgiving morning, I attended the Lars Turkey Trot for the rain that was there. It was still very well attended. Everybody stayed warm. In fact, by the end of it, most people were sweating. Flipping to the other side of that, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, on the thirtieth, Economic and Community Development, thank you to them for hosting Small Business Saturday in the freezing cold. I was very happy to see they had a heater, but they were dedicated and out there all three hours of the morning. On December second, I attended the Laurel for Patuxent meeting to give an update on different city initiatives and answer any questions they may have. On December sixth, I attended the Getting Ahead Program graduation at the Laurel Multi-Service Center. It was great to hear all the stories of the graduates and how that program had affected them. This past Saturday was busy for the entire council as we kicked off the holiday season in Laurel. Parks and Recreation, Police Department, and Public Works were very busy keeping us all safe as we had the various events, starting with Breakfast with Santa in the morning, the Holiday Parade, and the City Tree Illumination. Also that day, I attended the Pearl Harbor Monument Salute by the American Legion Post sixty Honor Guard at City Hall, and I attended the Winter Market, which was a great success for its first run. Later that evening on Saturday, I attended the annual Dawn's Gift Lars fundraiser at Oliver's Old Town Tavern. Followed up by yesterday morning, I attended the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department Auxiliary Breakfast. Last week, I also spent some time submitting my fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget requests to Mayor Sidnor, including funding the public school employee tax credit that was recently passed, continued support for local newspapers through advertising, including Laurel Independent, and potentially the Voices of Laurel. I also asked for some composting swag for the public school students, continued funding for Laurel Pride Day, and potentially adding green energy tax credits for next fiscal year. Upcoming events in the city? Tomorrow and Wednesday, the tenth and eleventh, Laurel Cats is holding their fundraiser at Bella Italian off of Van Dusen Road. This coming Friday is the deadline to email or call to nominate your home or your neighbor's home for the annual holiday decorating contest. The number to call for that is three zero one seven two five seven eight zero zero. This coming Saturday, Wreaths Across America will be kicking off at eleven A M. At City Hall to go over to Ivy Hill Cemetery. On the fifteenth, there will be a tree care workshop hosted by Laurel for Patuxent in Riverfront Park on planting and tree maintenance tips for your lawn. The instructors will be from Howard County Eco Works. Next week, on the eighteenth, there is a Laurel Pride Day Planning Committee meeting at six P M. Virtually. And finally, on December twenty-third, your last chance for Pictures with Santa are from four to five thirty P M. In Partnership Hall, followed by an indoor movie, The Grinch. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
You, Councilmember Cole. Next, Councilwoman Christine Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. For my report, I'd just like to share that on Monday, December the second, I attended the meet and greet with the city's boards and committee members. It was a great opportunity to meet the members and hear about the different opportunities that are available in the city. So I would like to extend my thanks for their willingness to serve and help improve the city. Their time, dedication, and input is invaluable to what we do in the city. So thank them for that. On Tuesday, December the third, I attended the unveiling of the Priority Portion Priority Partners cupboard located at the Armory across the street from Laurel Elementary School. Through this initiative and partnership, there is free food available twenty-four seven. So I think that's just like a great thing to have available, but I just wanted to remind citizens gently, just to make sure, you know, we take care of what's in our neighborhood and make sure that as a community, we look after the cupboard, we make sure it's clean and free from trash and debris. And it's also an excellent way for organizations to participate. I'm learning that I think next year they'll be able to, you know, coincide with providing food for the pantry in addition to other ways around the city. So I'm learning there are so many, many ways that we can participate through the multi-service center, the volunteer program, different opportunities through parks and recreation. So I just hope that during this time, everyone can find a way where they can give back in an area that they would like when they choose. And then lastly, that's on a mommy note too with volunteer opportunities. Because there are so many available, there's no reason why our high school students would not complete and exceed their service learning hours requirement. So if they have any questions, they can reach out to us. We have many, many opportunities available. And I look forward to the upcoming holiday festivities and seeing the pretty lights and decorations around the city, starting with Councilman Cole's home. I can't wait. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Next, we have Councilmember Jeffrey Mills.
Good evening, Madam President, Mayor, City Council, and everyone. My, I wanted to start with November thirtieth. I had the honors of being presented at the Laurel Park for the City of Laurel Stakes Race. That was a great race. It was very exciting, and I was able to get a tour of the Laurel Park. I didn't get to ride the horse, though. All right. But the December six, Getting Ahead Program was a great opportunity. I got to use some of my Espanol as well. And the December seventh, Holiday Parade and Lights, that was a great event. Wasn't too cold, so perfect, perfect day to be amongst the constituents. Upcoming, December eleventh, the Juneteenth Committee is having a virtual meeting, and that will be six P M. So we look forward to that. And the, and my last, oh, my last upcoming event is the Safe Winter Program. That is confirmed now. So anyone that would like to bring your child out to continue with the free coding classes, and also we have a special, special four weeks of, this will be four Fridays in a row, December twentieth, December twenty-seventh, January third, and January tenth, four Fridays in a row, free coding for the children, and also special classes from Navy Federal Credit Union. So I look forward to that, and we're going to do something big here in the city for the children. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Now we have Councilmember Simmons. And Simmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate it. Many overlaps with the events that other members have gone to. Thanksgiving morning was a lot of fun. I was prepared to be steered against the rain and the cold of that morning, but thankfully, it was just lightly dripping. And I got to tell you, the energy of the runners and the volunteers from Lars and everybody there, of course, the music helped as well. I left that energy more pumped up than I went to it. It was a great way to kick off Thanksgiving. Thank you to the many families who have made that a Thanksgiving tradition. One, it has a great impact for Lars and their mission to feeding the homeless or the hungry, and also encourage others to give it a shot on Thanksgiving and come on out and have some fun. You can even run with some special outfits on. We had reindeer ears and Santa costumes, all types of stuff. That Saturday on the Small Business Saturday was sort of a great kickoff with the passports. One idea I heard a member of the community mention is perhaps next year, that Winter Market is a great first pilot program with us, and there might be a natural synergy to do the Winter Market together with the Small Business Saturday. Both were some great events. Thank you for E C D for organizing that. As I was walking away from the Quill Lot from Small Business Saturday, I wandered down Main Street, and Gladleaf's was open on Main Street. So some of you may be familiar, the candy store there has the best caramel, the Chula La. And he's open for the holiday hours, Monday to Saturday, ten A M. To four P M. I cannot name anything that you wouldn't absolutely love there. So please feel free to sort of stop in. I know they'll appreciate seeing you in there. Small note for me in terms of some committee assignments, we sort of had some shuffling here on council and the new term. So just a heads up for folks, I'm now on the Historic District Commission. So please feel free to reach out, anybody out there who has questions on that, and also a little bit of an adopted committee with Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. We need one more member for that committee to sort of get it off the ground. I actually talked to somebody today at a bank I bumped into that's a cyclist, so I might have one person to send your way, Mr. Mayor. But anybody else out there, please let us know and we'd love to connect you to that. Also was able to meet up a little bit with the Laurel Historical Society, their volunteer happy hour. The Christmas ornament is out. It's the trolley station that starts at Oliver's and goes down to D C. Those are collector's items. You're going to want to have one for your tree if you don't already. And they also announced the date for their Spring Gala on May fourth, so you might want to stick that on your calendar. We talked about the kickoff for the Christmas season this past weekend. It was a blast. As I mentioned to President Clark, I think we had the cutest tree light switcher ever. It was, go check out the city's Facebook page for all the photos from the parade and the flip switching. And I think the Parks and Rec really outdid themselves. Be sure you go around the side of the building as you're going by the Armory, you know, swing by there, go around the side. There's some great new lights on the side. And then that same night, just to mention, it was gorgeous in the sky with the sunset. I don't know what's going on this last couple of days. There's probably some weather people out there that can let me know. I captured a couple of photos, put them up on my blog, AdrianforLaurel.org. I've seen other folks share them in Facebook. It's really been something to see these last few days. So a couple of future notes, then back to you. As President Clark mentioned, please nominate your neighbors for the holiday decorating contest. There's two out there I saw, and I need to send that to Parks and Rec. We're on the street. It is Councilman Cole's home. Cat's been cited from the International Space Station, so thank you for that, Councilman Cole. Reminder too, for Laurel High School, they are hosting their Education Fair on January sixteenth. So that's coming up soon. All levels of schools, elementary, middle, high school, come out for education resources for vocational schools, for higher educational schools.
Lot of events, great opportunities, great opportunities to be able to see constituents and even spend time with our city staff out in the community. Again, it was wonderful seeing everyone on Saturday at Breakfast with Santa and Mrs. Claus, plus the Holiday Parade, and then also the tree lighting. Many thanks to our Police Department, our D P W, Parks and Recreation Department, and city staff for bringing holiday magic to Laurel. And a special thank you to a four-year-old Jordan for making the lights on the tree light up and the snow fall at the community center that night. It was absolutely adorable and perfect. A friendly reminder, don't forget to stop local holiday season, not only for your gifts, but make sure that you stop by our restaurants to fill your tummies while you're running around getting those gifts wrapped up. We have some of the best places in the D M V. As Councilmember Simmons mentioned, we've been working with the Laurel High School to support the College Career and Community Resource Fair that will occur on January sixteenth from six to eight P M. We have a snow date of January twentieth. This is a wonderful opportunity and very valuable information will be there in resources for students as they begin to make important decisions about their futures after graduation. If any Maryland colleges entrepreneurs would like to be there to have a resource table, please feel free to call Mrs. Mitchell at three zero one four nine seven two zero five zero. And one final mention, I would like to wish my cousin, number ninety-seven, of the Army Black Knights West Point Football Team, as they are currently undefeated and will continue to be as they will play the Navy, sorry, Mayor Sidnor, here on Saturday, I will be there, front row and center rooting my cousin on. And this now concludes my report. Mayor Sidnor, I now open the floor to you.
Guess I'm by the later, I'll tell you later. Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays, everyone. I'm a reporter on November twenty-eighth. I also attended the Law Trump. Want to thank the Laura Advocate Referral Service, this is the twenty years of doing this, Race Against Hunger. They do a lot of good work for the city of Laurel, surrounding areas. We want to thank you for doing that. Really appreciate that. On December the third, excuse me, yes, second, I'm sorry, we had a volunteer committee with all the volunteers serving the various committees, want to meet with them and get them, give them some instructions, some guidance, the things we were looking forward to in twenty twenty-five, and just connect with them, tell them my plans, my ideas, and see what they can bring to the table as well. So I would appreciate everybody for coming out there as well. On December the third, we also met with Secretary of State of Jake Day for housing, excuse me, Secretary of Housing Jake Day. Other males there, the Mayor Rockville was there, the Mayor Tacoma Park was there, and the Mayor Gatorsbury was there. It was an important discussion talking about rent stabilization throughout the state. Secretary of Housing said that the state would not do any rent stabilization, would not, they believe that there was shortage of housing, and that once we get our housing under control, they believe that an interest rate would go down and rent would go down as well. But right now, there's no state law on anything for rent stabilization. So they're leaving up to each county, and Prince George County, as you know, had passed that. I agree with that. It's a regional thing. It should be on the municipalities. Municipalities should not take that fight alone. We should do it as a regional approach, and if the county approaches, Prince George County has made that a law. So thank the Prince George County Councilman for doing that as well. December the fifth, we attended the Maryland Municipal League State of Metropolitan Annapolis. That's when our exec director, Teresa Kong, she was talking about the things that taxes and things that municipalities are bringing to the state, how we should have input in that sale taxes as well. So she's going to be putting some legislation together, you know, to the state, hopefully that municipalities can receive some sale taxes and have some control of how much money we give back to the state. So stay tuned to that. On December the sixth, I attended the Annual Community Service Award Dinner at the Thrift Salvation Army down in Howard County. The Laurel Police is recognized as well. They gave the Laurel Police a thousand dollars to do community service work, so we really appreciate that. December the seventh, want to thank Park and Rex for what they always do, thirty-five years or more, I believe, during Brussels with the Santa, can just continue that. A lot of folks came out, appreciate that. Holiday Parade, thank Mrs. Gina Wade for organizing that, and Park and Rex again for organizing it as well. Always doing something for the community, especially for the little kids. We definitely got to take care of them. So I really appreciate you doing that. On December eighth, I partnered with the University of Maryland College Park Black Girls Vote Chapter. I met them at a speaking panel earlier this year, and they want to do some community outreach work after the post-election, so I took them around to various barber shops and nail salons, so they can talk and engage the community, and it was very informative. I want to go back to something, the Priority Partnership, the pantry that Councilman Johnson talked about. Miss Tiffany Turner, she talked to me about that about a year ago when I first got elected. And I want to thank Director Bailey for working with her from day one to get this off the ground. You can see that it's open now, and right now, the university, John Hopkins, excuse me, John Hopkins is going to be funding it for a year. And after John Hopkins finished funding, various organizations can take over and fund it and fill the cap cover. So you can get with a nonprofit, Prince George County, who's the lead, organize on that. So any organization that wants to take part in that, there are only two covers here, one in Laurel, one in Bladensburg. These are the two firsts in Prince George County, the majority of them in Baltimore City. So we really thank them for, you know, coming and bringing this idea to us, and they'll say yes right away as soon as she ordered to me. Some announcements we're going to have, we already mentioned before, on December the fourteenth, Reef Across America, something we do every year, about eleven o'clock right here at City Hall. Of course, we'll be closed on Christmas Day, and we close on January the first as well. So I'm going to go ahead and do a proclamation, Madam President, if you don't mind. The proclamation we're going to do this time is Kwanzaa. Kwanzaa is going to be celebrated from December twenty-sixth to January first. Kwanzaa is an African-American cultural holiday, but anyone can join. Of course, it was started in nineteen sixty-six by Dr. Melania Karanga out of Oakland, California. So President Bill Clinton was the first U S. President to recognize Kwanzaa. So we also have, the city of Laurel is having our Kwanzaa celebration on December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, of course, from two P M. To six P M. At Partnership Hall. Just come out there and learn about Kwanzaa. If you don't understand about Kwanzaa, seven principles, and I'm not going to go into detail, the principles, we come out there and learn it, the proclamation will be posted online. But it's a celebration to learn about African-American history as well, from December twenty-sixth to seven days, the principle each day. These principles tell you how to improve yourself, your community, and your faith, things of that nature. So yeah, Councilman Clark, the Navy will beat Army this year, so don't worry about that. So thank the Navy in advance for taking care of Army. And I conclude my report. I got some appointments, and I will tell you, give me the opportunity to make those appointments.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Please feel free to continue.
I'm sorry. Say again.
Would you like to continue with agenda item number five?
Yes. Yes, I got appointments to the Tree Board, I got Mr. Michael Gray for the Education and Virus Committee, Donita Sutton. I asked for council confirmation, these two individuals to the Tree Board, and to the Education and Virus Committee, Mr. Gray and Ms. Sutton.
You, Mayor Sidnor, do I have a motion from the council to approve the two appointments mentioned?
Yes, Madam President, I move to accept the mayor appointments as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
You, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilman Simmons.
Yes.
Councilman Cole.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
President Clark.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Moving to agenda item number six, our general public hearing. This is a time to hear from you, our community. Your voice matters, and we value your input. We encourage you to share your thoughts, concerns, and ideas with us as they are essential to shaping our work and our city's future. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak today?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no speakers signed up to speak today, I will open the general public hearing at six twenty-three P M. And close the general public hearing at six twenty-three P M. Moving to agenda item number seven, a bid recommendation for First Street Improvements for a construction project L A twenty-five dash zero zero two. Director Tim Miller from the Department of Public Works, you now have the floor.
Thank you, and good evening. Mayor Keith Sidnor, Council President Kayla Clark, and Laurel City Council members. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for construction project L A twenty-five O O two, First Street Improvements. This project includes the two-inch milling and overlay, repair of concrete sidewalk, curb-cut outfall scale, riprap, and concrete curbing at First Street in the city of Laurel. At a sealed bid opening at ten A M. On October sixteenth, the city received a total of ten bids for this project. The bids received ranging from lowest to highest are as follows. S F M S fifty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty cents. Calvert Ready Mix, fifty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety cents. Chamberlain Contractors, sixty-six thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. V M P Construction, sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Espina Paving, seventy thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. Alcoa Concrete and Masonry, seventy-two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Arthur Construction, seventy-five thousand three hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. E and R Services, Inc., seventy-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Ross Contracting, Inc., eighty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents. And Francis O'Day, one hundred and seven thousand two hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. Funding for this project is provided in the adopted fiscal year twenty-twenty-five C I P First Street Improvement Project. It's recommended that the contract for this project be awarded to S F M S L L C, a certified women's business enterprise, minority business enterprise, disadvantaged business enterprise, and small business enterprise from Gathersburg, Maryland, for their bid of fifty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty cents, with an additional contingency of five thousand five hundred forty-one dollars and seventy cents, for a total of sixty-one thousand dollars. S F M S has previously completed projects for the city. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer them now.
You, Director Miller. Are there any questions from the council? With no additional questions, I will now entertain a motion for this bid recommendation.
Madam President, I move that we approve the bid recommendation for L A twenty-five dash zero zero two First Street Improvements to S F M S L L C in the amount of sixty-one thousand dollars.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
You, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Cole.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
I was trying to, I was trying to verify the amount that Councilman Cole just mentioned. It was a S F M S L L C for fifty-five thousand four hundred fifty-eight. Oh, I'm sorry, the total, okay, yeah, I see it. I see it now. Yes, yes.
Councilman Simmons.
Yes.
President Clark.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. For agenda item number eight is for a sole source purchase recommendation. This will be an ongoing project by the city of Laurel Department of Public Works to replace existing metal halide and high-pressure sodium street lighting and the conversion to one hundred and fifty watt L E D fixture heads. This work will be performed by B G E's Division for Outdoor Lighting. Director Tim Miller, you now have the floor.
Thank you very much. This is the request, the sole source. This is to request the sole source purchase approval for the removal of one hundred and eighty-seven high-pressure sodium. Pendant fixtures in the vicinity of the villages of Wellington Development, Old Sandy Spring Road. Saratoga Avenue, Shannon Avenue, and other streets throughout the city. The one hundred and eighty-seven fixtures will be replaced with one hundred watt and one hundred and fifty watt L E D pendant and colonial fixtures. In total, mapping of the exact fixtures. Were provided and were attached, provided to council. This is an ongoing project by the city of Laurel Department of Public Works. Reducing the number of high-pressure sodium and metal halides and lights in the city. Which consume more than four times the energy. And may only last two to five years with longer-lasting twenty-five-year expected life. One hundred watt, one hundred and fifty watt L E D fixtures. The work will be performed by B G and E's Division for Outdoor Lighting. B G and E is the public utility service provider for gas and electric service in the entire city of Laurel. It is recommended. The mayor and city council of Laurel approve this purchase from B G and E, an excellent company. For a total of one hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars for improvement of energy. Savings and sustainability at these locations. Funding for this project is provided for in the adopted physical year, twenty-twenty-five C I P. Project, um, sorry, street lighting. And we also have a twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-dollar. M E A Grant, that's known as the Maryland Energy Administration. Which will be port forth for this purchase. Should you have any questions or desire further information? I can answer those questions now.
You, Director Miller, are there any questions from the council?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Simmons.
Yeah, mostly just an update from last week. I knew I had shared a resident had. Uh, earlier this fall provided a resource about the Dark Sky International, which is a. Uh, organization that promotes like preserving the night sky through the lighting. That we use both for residences, for commercial, and for city. And I just want to provide an update. I did post today. Um, you know, to my blog, Adrian for Laurel dot org about. That, uh, it's a, it's a resource that residents can use if you're looking for lighting around your own house. There's approved lighting list that they suggest as well as guidance municipalities. And I know Director Miller mentioned as we look at some of the new developments around town, we can maybe fold in some of the considerations, uh, you know, into that. So. Um, it's especially like things I know earlier this fall, we had the Aurora Borealis we could see and a lot of stuff sitting on our, you know, back. Porches and such, preserving that night sky is a, I think, a great aspiration for us. So just wanted to share that with folks.
You, Councilmember Simmons, are there any additional questions? With no additional questions, I will now entertain a motion for this bid recommendation.
Madam, um, President, I make a motion to approve the purchase from B G and E. For the replacement of the existing lights to replace those with the conversion lights. For a total of ninety-five thousand, three hundred and ten dollars for the first phase. And seventy thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars for the second phase.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have a motion by Councilwoman Johnson and a second by Councilmember Cole. Can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item number nine, a bid recommendation for improvements on Lafayette Avenue for construction project L A twenty-five. Dash zero zero four. Director Tim Miller, you now have the floor again.
Thank you very much. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval. For construction project L A twenty-five, zero zero four Lafayette Avenue Improvements. This project includes the two-inch milling and overlay, replacement of thermoplastic stop bars. Crosswalks and bike lane symbols on Lafayette Avenue in the city of Laurel, Maryland. At a sealed bid opening at ten A M. on October sixteen, the city received a total of ten bids for this project. The bids received range from the lowest to highest are as follows as read aloud. V M P Construction. Sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Calvert Ready Mix. Sixty-five thousand, five hundred and five dollars. S F M S. Sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. E N R Services. Seventy-four thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. Chamberlain Contracting. Seventy-nine thousand, ninety-five dollars. Alcoa Concrete and Masonary. Eighty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Ross Contracting Incorporated. Ninety-four thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars. Francis O'Day. Ninety-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Espina Paving Incorporated. Ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Arthur Construction. Ninety-nine thousand, thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Funding for this project is provided for in the adopted physical year, twenty-twenty-five C I P. Lafayette Avenue Improvement Project. It's recommended that the contract for this project be awarded to V M P Construction Company. A minority business enterprise, disadvantaged business enterprise, and small business enterprise. From Lanham, Maryland. For their bid of sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. With an additional, additional contingency of six thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. For a total of seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars. V M P has previously completed projects for the city of Laurel.
You, Director Miller, are there any questions from the council? With no additional questions, I will now entertain a motion for this bid recommendation.
Madam President, I move that we award the contract to V M P Construction in the amount of seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thank you. Have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I have a motion by Councilmember Simmons and a second by Councilwoman Johnson. Can you please call the roll?
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, for agenda item number ten. For the architectural and engineering firms' contract continuation recommendation by the Department of Public Works. Director Tim Miller, you now have the floor.
Thank you very much. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval to extend the current on-call engineering contracts. With the three firms listed below through July first, twenty-twenty-five. They are E B A Engineering Incorporated. Century Engineering, Kleinfelter Company. And K C I Technologies. The continuance of these on-call contracts is critical to expending the remainder of the ARPA funds. Completing the physical year twenty-twenty-five capital improvement projects. And utilizing firms already knowledgeable. Of city contracts and the city's methodology in designing, bidding, and administering these projects. Having firms already knowledgeable in the city's process. Will help ensure the completion of the remaining C I P projects for physical year twenty-twenty-five. It's recommended that the current on-call engineering firms be retained at their current rates and subject to the terms of conditions. As described in their A I A document, B. One O two dash two thousand seventeen. Standard form of agreement between owner and architect. As executed by the city and these firms back in November and December of twenty-twenty. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer them now.
Thank you, Director Miller. Are there any questions from the council? With no additional questions, I will now entertain a motion for this bid recommendation.
Madam President, I make a motion to retain the current on-call engineering firms that are listed at their current rates.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I have a motion, Councilwoman Johnson, and a second, Councilmember Mills. Can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item number eleven, the introduction in first public hearing on resolution number five dash two zero two four. A resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, creating the master plan review committee and providing an effective date. I've read the title into the record for the first hearing. Director Monte Burrow, you now have the floor.
Good evening, Madam President, Clark, Mayor, fellow council members. This is Director Monte Burrows. Resolution number five twenty twenty-four is a resolution that allows the mayor of the city council of Laurel to create a master plan review committee. The city of Laurel is required per state law to review and update the city's master plan at least once every ten years. And the committee will assist the city department Economic Community Development to ensure that the plan addresses the city's vision. For the future development and economic growth. Thank you, Madam Pres- President. That concludes my reading. I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Okay, I will now open the public hearing on this item at six forty P M. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
Hey, Madam President.
Thank you. Uh, seeing that there are no speakers, I will close the public hearing at forty-one P M. Because of the holiday, we will not have a second meeting this month. With that being said, we'll need to suspend the rules on this item. Um, if it is the council's desire to pass the resolution tonight. If so, I will entertain a motion to suspend the, suspend the rules.
Madam President, I move that we suspend the rules for resolution number five dash zero dash twenty twenty-four.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I have a motion by Councilmember Cole and a second by Councilmember Mills. If you can please call the roll.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Uh, yes, with the advice administration.
Uh, President Clark? Motion carries.
Thank you. Counsel, I will now entertain a motion on resolution number five dash two zero two four.
Madam President, I'll motion to. To, um, was that motion for the resolution of number five dash twenty twenty-four?
You do, I have a second?
Madam Clerk, I second the motion to adopt resolution number five twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I have a motion from Councilmember Mills and a second uh by Councilmember Cole. If you can please call the roll.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Sidnor?
I concur.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item number twelve is the introduction in first public hearing on resolution number six. Dash two zero two four, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland. Declaring a temporary moratorium regarding the processing of zoning matters within the city of Laurel, Maryland. And providing an effective date. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. Director Monte Burrow, you now have the floor.
Good evening again, Madam President, Mayor, fellow councilman. This is again Director Burrows. Resolution number six twenty twenty-four is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Laurel declaring a temporary moratorium. Regarding processes of zoning matters within the city during the development of the master plan. In twenty sixteen, the city amended the most recent master plan. Staff anticipate it may take up to eighteen-month process to adopt a new and revised city master plan and comprehensive rezoning plan. Within, within this eighteen months, staff recommend the mayor, the city council place a reasonable moratorium of ten months. Upon the process of zoning requests, special exception requests, and text amendment during the dependency. And review of the new master plan and comprehensive rezoning plan. Staff recommends a moratorium beginning in January the second, twenty twenty-five. Through October thirty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my reading. Fine. I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Burrow. I see that there is a question from Councilmember Cole. Please proceed.
Uh, Madam President, I just wanted to make some clarifications on some of the questions I had at last week's work session. Uh, last week I had questions why we were proposing a ten-month moratorium and not longer if it's taking the master plan. Eighteen months to be adopted. I did want to thank staff and legal counsel for their response. Um, legal counsel did cite that the U S Supreme Court already decided a similar case to this in two thousand and two. Uh, the Tahoe Sierra Preservation Council Incorporated versus the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. Um, where they found at the Supreme Court level, anything longer than a year could be considered. Uh, taking of the property owner's property by changing the rights of what we might be doing with that property. And the uh, planning agency had to pay for uh, the difference in that. So. Doing this for less than a year will keep us from having to pay people for their property. That concludes my comment, Madam President.
I see an additional question from Councilmember Simmons and then Mayor Sidnor.
Uh, yes, to comment as well, um, that we discussed at the work session, but in case there's no folks with us tonight to clarify that the moratorium is primarily for sort of new. Uh, applications, new development. So if folks out there need to request a permit for doing a, you know, small improvements at their home or things along those manners or. You're operating within an already approved project, the expectation is you can continue to make progress on that. But this moratorium is just around uh, new development while the city completes some of its master plan research. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, you, Councilmember Simmons, Mayor Sidnor?
Just want to thank Director Burrows, um, they said that stuff last week that. With advising us, lawyer advised us, that's why it's ten months because of the court case. So. Yeah, everything that we went over in the work session, Director Burrows was. I'm spot on with attorney help on this shop. So, uh, just want to let them know, good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments or questions from the council? If there are no additional questions, I will now open the public hearing on this item at six forty-seven P M. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers signed up for this public hearing of this agenda item?
Hey, Madam President.
Thank you. Um, with no speakers, I will close the public hearing at six forty-seven P M. Again, because of the holiday, we will not have a second meeting this month. Um, and we will need to suspend the rules on this item if the council's desire is to pass the resolution tonight. If so, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Madam President, uh, motion to suspend the rules.
You do, I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have a motion by Councilmember Mills and a second by Councilwoman Johnson. If you can please call the roll.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
No.
Councilman Simmons?
I, I do exercise a hesitancy on, on suspending the rules. Uh, I'll, I'll join with Councilman Cole saying no.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel, I will now entertain a motion on resolution. Number six dash two zero two four.
Madam President, I motion to adopt resolution number. Madam President, I motion to adopt resolution number six that six dash twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I have, Madam Clerk, I have a motion from Councilmember Mills and a second from Councilwoman Johnson. If you can please call the roll.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark? Mayor Sednor?
I concur.
Motion carries.
Thank you. For agenda item number thirteen is the introduction in first public hearing on ordinance number two zero three three, the ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland to amend the city of Laurel Police Retirement Plan to extend the deferred retirement option plan. I've read the title into the record for the first reading, Director Michelle Saylor. Um, I understand that you have a summary and overview of the city's retirement plan and drop program. You now have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. Um, good evening, everyone. Ordinance twenty twenty-three is specific to the Laurel Police Retirement Plan. Um, as we discussed at the work session, um, the city manages its own retirement plans, administers those. We have a twenty-year uh, police retirement and a thirty-year employee retirement, um, regardless of age. Um, and then there are other opportunities with vesting and and age sixty-five um, and and those factors. Um, the deferred retirement option plan is a way that if a if an employee is eligible for retirement, they could retire. Um, they could just continue to work, or they could continue to work and join the drop, which is sort of a hybrid of the two. Um, so at that point, their uh, retirement benefits would be calculated. They would stop um, the payroll, we would stop payroll deductions for them to add any additional to the pension plan. And their retirement benefits would be um, provided to uh, Schwab for an account that they would self-direct as far as the investments, they could be as aggressive as they want to be or conservative um, in those investments. Um, for the employees, they have a maximum of seven years that they can belong to the drop. For the sworn police officers, it's five years. Um, and at that point, then you must separate from the city. Um, so once you are a full-fledged retiree, then the city would start making those benefit, those retirement benefit payments directly to the new retiree, and they would make arrangements to uh, get their drop money out of the Schwab account. That's been, you know, hopefully very successfully growing for them with uh, with interest earnings and investment earnings. Um, again, for our retirement purposes, we administer that ourselves. Uh, the first of every month is we, the city, the payroll clerk is um, paying the retirees that calculated benefit um, and then making that payment to Schwab on behalf of the fifth of the fourteen members of the drop program. Uh, those funds are coming from the pension fund, not from the city. Um, as we discussed as well, at the end of each fiscal year, uh, my office provides information to the actuaries. But then um, the information being these uh, payroll and pension deductions from all the current employees, the um, benefits for the retirees, and um, they're looking to at the investment performance of the um, the plan and are able to calculate for the city what our contribution should be. So um, we're still working on the FY twenty-four valuation. Um, but the FY twenty-three valuation was what we use to um, budget for the FY twenty-five city contribution to the plans. Um, at that time, uh, this president, Madam President, um, I have I'm just here for any other questions there may be.
Director Saylor, are there any questions from the council or comments? Councilmember Simmons?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And uh, first, I just want to thank Director Saylor for our patience with me and uh, and conversing and learning about that process. Uh, I was able to see a copy of the summary plan document, you know, on on Friday. It was very helpful to sort of break down the plan. Uh, at first it wasn't clear to me, you know, how it worked, but it's much clearer now. And and part of what you just summarized too, which is important that the the city's withdrawing from operating funds to make these contributions, it's coming out of the the pension benefit that has been accumulated over the years of service uh, for the employees so that it sort of minimizes the financial impact. So and I took a little look at the budget as well, but I just wanted to thank you very much. Uh, I appreciated it.
I love them.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Are there any additional questions from the council? Councilmember Cole?
Madam President, I just had a comment on this that I I think that the drop program and continuing, it's very important for our for our employees. This is something uh, that's a big added benefit for recruiting. When you look at what we have as a city versus what other municipalities are offering, this does give us an advantage uh, with the way our drop program is set up. I fully support this one, Madam President.
You Councilmember Cole, are any additional comments or questions from the council? Okay, with no additional questions or comments, I will now open the public hearing at six fifty-five PM. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers signed up for tonight?
Hey, Madam President.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no speakers, I will close the public hearing at six fifty-five PM. As previously shared, we will not have a second meeting this month due to the holiday. With that being said, we'll need to suspend the rules on this item if it is the council's desire to pass the ordinance tonight. If so, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Madam President, I move that we suspend the roles on ordinance number twenty thirty-three.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have a motion from Councilmember Cole and a second from Councilmember Mills. If you can please call the roll.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Uh, as mentioned, I have a hesitancy about suspending the rules that they exist for a reason. So um, I want to be sure we protect the the benefits of the employees and I do support the program, but I don't support suspending the rules at this time to allow the people a voice.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Counsel, I will now entertain a motion um, on ordinance number two zero three three.
Madam President, I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty thirty-three.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, I have a motion from Councilmember Cole and a second from Councilmember Mills. If you can please call the roll.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark? I'm sorry, President Clark, aren't you?
I'm sorry, yes.
Uh, Mayor Sednor?
I concur.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, for agenda item number fourteen is the introduction in first public hearing on ordinance number two zero three four, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland to amend the city of Laurel Employees Retirement Plan to extend the deferred retirement option plan. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. Director Michelle uh, Saylor, you have covered this item in the previous presentation. Um, or would you like to cover in any additional items?
Thank you, Madam President. Only that, again, we have uh, two pension plans, one for the sworn police and one for the other employees, including civilian employees at the police department. Um, which is why you'll always see a companion ordinance um, when there's a change to be made or an update for the pension plans. Um, and just that, again, um, this does not affect any of the current drop participants. This only allows us to continue to offer the drop um, opportunity to those who wish to sign up um, moving forward.
Um, that they help us to be sure, be sure this is an open process, that everybody has input, including the people. And so um, in my view, you know, first of all, I want to be sure we support the employees. I do support this provision. I want that to be very clear. Um, but I also support the people to sort of have their voice. And when we short-circuit the process, we usurp their power. So uh, I just wanted to to share that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? Okay, I will now open the public hearing at six fifty-nine PM. Uh, Madam Clerk, are there any, is there anyone signed up to speak?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing at six fifty-nine PM with no one signed up to speak. As previously stated, we will not have a second meeting this month due to the holiday. Um, so we will need to suspend the rules on this item if it is the council's desire to pass the ordinance tonight. If so, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Madam President, I move to suspend the roles for ordinance number twenty thirty-four.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a motion from Councilmember Cole and a second from Councilmember Mills. If you can please call the roll.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Back in the comments as I made earlier, I do support this provision, but not for the suspension of the rules. I would prefer the natural rules to take their course.
So that's a no, right?
Correct, no on suspension.
Okay. Uh, President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion on ordinance number two zero three four.
Madam President, I move, I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty thirty-four.
You do have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Cole and a second from Councilmember Simmons. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Uh, Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Sednor?
I concur.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, happy holidays, Laurel, and thank you, everyone, for your time tonight. With no further business to come before the mayor and city council, this meeting is adjourned at seven oh one PM.